Okay, well, either way, we are gonna switch up one and two because Chief Arneak is not quite here yet. And we'll start with number two, and so we'll just wait for Richard to be on the second one. We'll do it and through the Navarre parking lot discussion. Yeah, that's true. He'd write you checks to anybody in 2022. All right, Richard is here. I'm gonna start with number two. Richard makes seven one because Corey is not here.
Okay. That was mine. So in the bar parking lot, as you know, we've been looking at improvements in the bar parking lot in the past several years. Did some public outreach, did a feasibility study, and then started a design line last summer. The reason I'm bringing this in the work session is, one, just kind of an update that we've completed most of that design. But also, as after going through that process, we've realized we have some expenses that we were not originally anticipating. So part of what I'd like to do is talk about how we might get the project done and what possible funding sources or course of action we might take when it comes to funding. On slide, just as a reminder for those, this is kind of the site plan for what we were looking at doing. So if you look at the site plan, the area in the light gray with the parking stalls marked on it, that is the portion of the project that the city would be doing. There's yellow and blue on there, which are the private businesses that are adjacent with parking, which we had some preliminary discussions with about whether they would want to do paving of their parks of the block at the same time.
So those, the ones right in front of the hardware store, those are the all the cities, no, none of those?
Correct. We would, in the park line yellow, we would look at doing a little bit of paving in that area.
In the corner.
In the corner where the Travel Bayos Theater, you can see more than the two arrows. We have traditionally or historically maintained that piece of pavement, so although it's technically on their land, we would like to bring doing that piece of the asphalt at the same time. The drivers for the project were to, originally were to restore the pavement, re-market, try to make it safer and make the flow work better. And then, and then we addressed some concerns we got from the community when we did our outreach. So that's what we have. The other highlights to mark on there, you notice we created a one-way traffic pattern throughout the parking lot, which we've discussed in the past. And the other thing is the blue dots along the center, those are new lights in the lot. The red dots along the outside are the existing lights. All the lights for the current plant would have, obviously new lights or completely new, but the existing lights would have new heads, new light heads and actual fixtures moving to LED. And that sort of thing to make them more efficient, also they're very useful light. The other part of the project you don't necessarily see on this diagram is that we would be including the associated stormwater system improvement. So you can see some of the manholes on there, little circles. So most of the stormwater manholes need rehabilitation, at least in the top section pieces, just below the pavement. And then also some of them require some work at the bottom of the manhole. So that was kind of what we were talking about doing. On the slide and in your packet, the cost there on the left, we add all the things up, came to the project total of $457,000. Some of the key cost drivers in that, in addition to just the rise in construction prices of the last few years. The key things that are kind of new and drive some of the costs here are, is the curbing. The curbing drives a bunch of additional survey work, so we can get the drainage right, we've got to set those concrete curves at just the right level, that sort of thing. So there's some costs there, not only is concrete becoming expensive, and then the lighting, lighting is always expensive, and so that's a key driver. Lighting, you can see it's broken out as a separate line above $140,000 is the current estimate we have to do that line. And that's both the new lighting, the conduits to support the lighting, the control box, and the new heads on the existing line.
So obviously, the stormwater, the water are pretty minor moments, and those are usually covered by the stormwater water funds.
Correct.
Okay, what fund were we doing? Actually, I can't remember now. What fund were we looking at?
So on the right there, you see I broke it down into funding sources. So we had stormwater, water fund, as you mentioned there, those are relatively small amounts and easily covered by those funds. In fact, we have more projected for stormwater than we actually needed at this point. The challenge is, we were going to pay for the rest of this parking lot out of the community investment fund. We projected in the 2023 capital improvement plan, $310,000. And right now, I'm estimating based on this latest design submit order thirty, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, I've been reading my glasses, sorry, to be able to complete that work. So, some ideas. So there's several course of action we might take a look at. These are just the back end. We could reduce the scope of the project, we could reduce lighting and take the curbing out of that. I don't necessarily recommend that course of action. I think if we're gonna go do this parking lot, we're gonna do it right, we're gonna address all the concerns we heard from the community now, but it is a course of action we could pursue. We could delay the project, perhaps 2025 or later, waiting for that fund balance to build some more, you know, at least this year, and we will have projected to have levy amounts going into that fund so that we can pay for these kind of things.
Because the year income is balanced, just to, you know, as you guys, six hundred and thirty-two.
Correct.
That's what we've got right now. So we have plenty money, we said, let's do this, right?
Right.
And what additional dollars do we have going in 2023?
In 2023, we have $219,000, second to bottom.
Oh, revenues, okay, there's two twenty-five and two fifty, and that's a projection. But two nineteen's already in the budget.
That's me.
So we said six thirty-two, we've got eight fifty, basically.
And so a couple items that jump down to that option D, which is what I was thinking we probably end up with, is the community, the community investment fund. The two main things we had programmed in there for this year were the Navarre parking lot and our portion of the Casa 112 turnback, which is the western end of Yezda Boulevard. One good bit of news is, well, it's good and bad, it's bad, and then it's been delayed again, good on the financing side of it. So it looks like that project, that county project, will not go until 2024, so we don't need those funds in 23. Which means in 23, we're fine, we have lots of balance. I also, just for argument's sake, because it's coming up in other areas, I threw in there, we'll do on that slide. Our park dedication fund is going to have a projected balance of about $50,000 for this year. We have plenty more possible expenses in there. So for the sake of this exercise, I threw in there, well, what if we did, what we're talking about for the golf portion for this parking lot and maintenance shed portions of those projects, how would that look if we were to give it to, into the community investment fund? So in any case, that's what I threw together. The challenge is, if we did all of those things, and the county wonderful project came in as budgeted, now this is a budget number from about five years ago, so, and we don't have new numbers from then, at five hundred and seventy thousand. We would potentially have a deficit in that fund at the end of 2024.
Well, that's assuming that you're doing the golf course parking lot, the maintenance shed, and all the rest of the as well, which are kind of separate of the Navarre.
It is, but I wanted to just kind of focus in on this, this community investment fund, the potential impacts to it. So, you know, saying yes to these additional funds from the Navarre parking lot does have, or potentially could limit choices for the city.
Because it's about a hundred thousand, right? Well, it seems like we've got, I think, I mean, I think we should bid it out with Fox regardless, as an alternate, just to bid them together, so we have a bigger project to bid. Give a little more weight to somebody wanting to do it, so that might help us out. Because I'd like not to delay as much as possible, and I've talked to the owners over there too, and I think we're looking forward to this as a major change in helping, kind of what's going on over there, and it's been a long time coming. We've caught up on really all of our bad roads and everything over the last eight years pretty well. This is kind of a leftover. But I know we have a few other different potential funding revenue possibilities that we could kind of get into that are, but I think it probably goes up to me, I'd say let's, I would hope to continue moving the discussion forward and putting it together with Fox. And then throw it to the budget committee to try and figure out the appropriate avenues for the dollars and what they can come from. Is that gonna be a lot?
Yeah.
A lot of cutting hairs.
I'd be an advocate in keeping the lights and so forth. I think if you're gonna do it.
Do it right.
Do it properly and make sure it's lit properly for everybody's safety. But I like the design, I think it's great. I think it's gonna be really positive for the area too.
Yeah, and I know Cindy thought it was a great, a great, who's the owner of the Narrows, that was a great decision. I don't think, I haven't really heard anybody who hasn't liked it yet.
I think it'll benefit all the businesses in the neighborhood as well.
Something one of the last few pieces I think we, I think we really haven't gotten to, unless anybody else can think of other ways that we haven't gotten to. Because we've got the trails done, we've got the lighting done along.
The trail connection.
The trail connection.
Plus the open room and bus stop that's over there.
There, we talked about, you know, now we'll get some additional community involvement with, even when you have farmer's market and stuff like this. Do we, where did we end up on our conversation with where the dumpsters are going?
As our goal was told that they were gonna stay where they.
Yeah, okay.
There were some requests like to put the dumpsters on the other side of the parking lot.
But there was grading issues.
No grading issues, also just issues with the security proximity.
The logistics of having it far away.
Right.
And I'm, what I'm, I'm supporting and moving forward on it, I think, I think this is a needed improvement for that area, so I'd like to see a key one before we go.
The next steps we can do in four is just we will finalize the design and we'll, we'll put it out for bid.
Yeah, I think with Fox.
And if we would, but yes, it would make sense to put it out with other pavement, to see if we can get better.
But as an alternate, so they're not.
Correct, so we can pull it out.
So we can pull it out, right, just in case something goes weird or crazy. But the goal, I think, is to get it done, because that's a, this is a good, this is a long-term fix for Navarre, for sure.
Ooh, lary.
I mean, it's been that way for decades, so this will be the first time of really cleaning this up. And thank God we've got the businesses on board all at the same time, which is unique, you know, and everybody's on the same page, Dad, it's got special money.
And so that, just, I know this is a little bit separate, so just to bring it back into your view, is if we were going to bid pavement, the other piece of pavement that we've talked about, and I'm not talking about Town Line, because that's, that'll come to, that's a little separate, separate of roads, but that kind of road is the golf course parking lot. We've talked about trying to get that paved this year, and we think that's around $40,000. And we're still going for that, that, again, I want to bundle them, they can be alternates.
I would agree to keep that going too, because that's.
Pulling out and working on.
Regardless, that's a needed commodity over there too, and that's a small piece, but I've hung them all in there, but as separate alternates, yeah.
Enticing the bid.
And I'm supportive of it too, but do you, could you refresh me, what is the five seventy-four, which is probably nowhere near that number anymore for the turnback? Like what have?
What is that paid for?
Yeah. I know.
Hey, correct, it's a good question.
It feels like it's so long. And I kind of, it's, you know, it's almost like you haven't had it for so long, that I'm starting to wonder what, like, what are we doing, is the, is the need there? Because I don't even remember what it is.
Yeah, some of that we have no choice in.
Okay.
So there are, there are cost sharing agreements, or called mandates, really, from the county, whenever we do things with the county and county roads. So first and most expensive piece that will come to us is, when we do the 112 Phase Three, there are two signal intersections, Willow and Old Crystal Bay Road. And the cost sharing on that sees us paying for fifty percent of those signals.
What, is it, I mean, there's signals there.
Figure a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a leg, four legs on each.
So just putting new ones in?
Yeah, just replacing the signals.
Okay.
A hundred and twenty thousand dollars a leg, and there's four legs, so that's four hundred and eighty thousand each, each semi for basically, so it takes a little bit of a million dollars.
Well, the county would take care of half of them, so we have two legs coming into each intersection.
So still that half of, like a million dollars is still half a million dollars.
Yeah, so.
So what's the remainder?
The remainder are any, any area of purification things we want to do. So if we were continuing the, for instance, the decorative light holes, we have to pay the difference between a minimum standard light hole and a decorative light hole, if that is our choice. Now, that's less, this is only two or three spots where we're gonna consider doing that, otherwise you get the, you know, the Cobra Head.
Well, while, while the apartment side, that's the water side, the other side is the lawn nick side.
Correct.
So it depends kind of a little bit on what they do at two.
Yeah, until, yeah, until you get out to this end, then it's all, you know, obviously the.
Once you get out to.
Once you get past, a little bit, yeah, once you get past the dome, everything on the south side is ours too. So, so it's those kind of things. We did, if some of you may remember, you know, the preliminary plan for the whole corridor showed the trail, the Yezda Boulevard trail continuing out past the school. We did remove that a couple of years ago from the plan, so the trail will now stop at here at the corner of Old Crystal Bay Road. So we shouldn't have any additional expenses for the trail, unless we decide to change our minds on that. But, so I think the primary ones would be light holes, signals at the intersections, and if there turns out to be any other things that we, we as a city decide we want to incorporate in that project. The other, the other one, I think, that was talked about at tax, but I think, you know, regarding that point, was whether or not we wanted a, you know, welcome to order type sign in those patterns. If you drive down the corridor, you can see where Law Lake did that intersection that you get to Brown Road, we paid for that, just like a corner of that, so we have those plantings. One corner of those plantings are ours, and we paid for it when that pays, but that, it's that kind of stuff.
But the chances of that number being handled at five seventies, probably not.
I, you know, I bumped it up a little bit since the years have gone by, but, you know, we, we may get surprised.
Are the delays?
I don't, I don't know what signals have done cost-wise in the last couple of years, but if it's left any other steel, it's gonna, it's gonna be considered.
I was just wondering if that's a boulder. If that number's in the realm of reality.
I think it's in the realm of reality, but it's still maybe a little bit light.
Okay. Got it.
Can't tell them to put in a cheap stop sign.
Or just leave them coming out.
A little wiggly light out here. Just do a little wiggly light.
You know, actually, we've been fighting with the county on some of the others, to make sure we continue to have, you know, civilized intersections.
Yeah, and I think it's gonna happen, we need them, especially when you're driving fifty miles an hour, you know, or fifty and fifty-five, actually. But, any other thoughts on that before the chief gets up here, or they want the THC is gonna be wrong, and we're soon. All good?
Well, no thought, I mean, this is all new to me, as you can imagine. I guess my questions would just be, as you mentioned, about the pavement. And is that necessarily having to group with the golf course, the asphalt that we do?
I was just trying to group all of the pavement.
We group them together, we do them as alternates, so as they get bid, if we want to pull one out from the bid, we, we are able to do that.
Okay.
But, but we're not obligating to it.
Yep, yep.
Sometimes you get better prices that way, because we're going to a pavement contractor, and he's gonna charge us one mobilization fee to come into town and do those projects, as opposed to if we bid them all separately, then, you know.
It doesn't make sense. If they're in the area, they're gonna do it, and that's Fox, is that the?
Fox is the one that we're doing this year. The one between Brown and.
Yeah, 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 okay.
And then the other road that we have hanging out there is Town Line Road, and that's, that's a project Medina is going to take the lead on, and there's a road that we own three ways. So we own a third of it, Medina owns a third of it, and Independence owns a third of it, so.
And we've been talking about it for all the eight years I've been on the council. That nobody's got all the acts together to, or there was a development, was at the north end, that they kept thinking was gonna go, and it went away, and so they're just finally just saying, let's just get it done.
So Medina's agreed to do it, their administration's reaching out, you've got a draft, the draft of a JPA for doing that project, we'll probably bring it to you in the next meeting or first meeting in February.
Is Independence on board?
Independence is, at least for their administrators, on board.
Why, you figure it's got all three.
Right, well, they got, all three has to be on, on the plan, so. That's Medina's lead, so.
Yeah, they wanted to take the lead on that project, so, which is good.
We have, all right, chief, you want to come up and be the guest of honor up here?
Good evening, Bob. So, as you are aware, last year, we, in order to put in, also the tractor, we had a new legislature that came out from Minnesota. Rulings regarding THC, we've been working with footballs, that we knew what was going on, looking at what's just practices with regulations, so cities, what other cities or ones are doing, looking at what is coming about. So, before you, in your packet, there's sample ordinances that were passed from communities in our, in our area that we want the council to look at. However, just recently, now knowing that the House and Senate are looking at legalizing marijuana, is maybe just putting a ban date on it, due to the fact that if they do, and add what they're talking about and discussing is, quote, on adult sale of marijuana. For Minnesota, this could just open up and maybe correct some of the stuff that we're proposing or looking at direction on, I believe. So, I guess what I'm, before you are several examples, just want to maybe explain a little bit between the options. However, you know, we still can do, do nothing and see what the legislature does with the legislature in session. Usually, if you pass something, the law goes into effect August first, so our moratorium ends, I believe, June or July, and then we're the exact timing. So they buy a six-month gap that we need to either fill and say that we're just gonna extend the moratorium and wait for the state, or we can proceed down a route where we're working and establishing that. One of the recommendations I was asking, could ask the council for direction on, is having a ordinance which would allow the sale of THC in our community to follow a licensing requirement very similar to tobacco. Where it's, the city would establish what businesses can sell, and usually those would be associated with, if you have a current tobacco license, we would say that if you hold a current tobacco license, or you're eligible to hold a tobacco license, you then could qualify for a THC license as well.
I know, I guess the first question I've got is kind of the, the first question issues that we have when we put the moratorium in place. We did that because the pharmacy board never came up with the rules of age sales, of the percentage of THC you could sell. They didn't have any of those qualified here, because the legislature just did that stuff without any rules attached to it. And the pharmacy board supposedly comes up with the rules, haven't done anything yet. Has any of those rules gotten in place that would say if you gave somebody that, then there actually are rules that follow who they can sell to, and the quantity, for that enough quantity, the price was quantity and the quality.
So, so that is that, meaning that packages has to be packaged in a certain way, they can't use animals, they can't have it associated with any other product, candy product, or any other trademark products, so you can't have, you know, we're getting there, or picture, similar to other candies. They did regulate the amount per packaging and per dose, and the amount of doses to be required, but what we're seeing, we're still struggling with, is that Board of Pharmacy has control over that, or enforcement can control. And last checking, they have one enforcement official for the entire state. So really, it's not being enforced, and we have, we don't have the authority to enforce it, we have the obligation to fill it up, or submit it to the Board of Pharmacy. And we know, I mean, there's in our community, not Orno, but in our neighboring communities, there's liquor stores that are selling seltzer in violation of different cities' moratoriums. However, what is the repercussions for doing so? What we're trying to do is, we know that there's, we've gotten phone calls where some of our established businesses are ready, that are selling tobacco products, that are requiring as to whether or not we're going to allow this, and so when. And so that's where, prior to the House and Senate, including that they have full support, they're gonna be pushing a, you know, broadening the expansion of the sale and use of marijuana. This is some of the concerns that go along with me just spinning our wheels, knowing and hoping that Minnesota gets it right this time, where they will address the, what is legal? What is the quantities, set up a licensing or a format, so that the cities can follow or have a template that the state is already set up, where when they set this up with THC, the state misses the mark on several of these, where.
Well, yeah, so THC is the drug portion of the call, and so is there a percentage that if you want to put so much of that in each dose, five percent?
It's point three percent of the five milligram dose.
Okay, so they have that, the standard.
It's done there, I know, I think where it gets tricky, as we all became THC experts about, presumably last year, is that technically what we are regulating isn't marijuana. I think we oftentimes conflate marijuana and THC with the marijuana, THC is a drug, you know. Technically, what a lot of the research would say from last year is, well, we legalized THC, we just clarified how it can be used, because under the federal pharmac, it's already people got that rate, but they considered marijuana. What we are hearing, and this is what Corey and I have had a good discussion, is that, you know, I was at a city attorney update, where all the new laws impacting cities were discussed by the League of Cities in the third week of June. And there was no mention of THC or anything, and that law became effective July one, nobody knew about it, and so there was no conversation.
Boy, I don't think a lot of people who wore that knew it either, so.
Well, they didn't, and, you know.
Was it just hidden in the bill?
Well, you'd say it was hidden in the omnibus bill, and sometimes that means something, that can be a three to four page document, this year, I think it was less than fifty. I just don't think people knew.
So here's my big question from legal perspective, because I'm not gonna mission Asher on whether I like it or don't like it, I'll just follow whatever the rules are. But if we decided to, and since we don't have an enforcement mechanism through the pharmacy board, because they don't have any people essentially, if we decided to say we're gonna tie this to a tobacco license, that says that enables you to sell these things, right? With the rules that are with it. So if all of a sudden we could, do we have an enforcement mechanism through that, that says if we go in and we spot check, kind of like when they go in and buy alcohol, and, you know, get tired, you get busted kind of thing? That you could lose your license to even sell it at all, that would that be our way of enforcing that then?
Essentially, yes.
Because to me, that would be the way then.
So it's included with the liquor license, the right to sell that, essentially?
Well, with the state, that's, that's a tricky one, depending which liquor license you're talking about. What the state has said, and it's not necessarily being observed, is that not through the THC legislation, but through the liquor licensing stuff, it tells stores off sale what they can sell, and it doesn't include THC products. Some liquor stores have said, eh, we think you're reading it too tight, and done it anyway. But the state, the alcohol gambling enforcement section, has said, you cannot sell THC-infused products on an off-sale liquor store. They have not, however, said that for on-sale liquor stores. So if you go to.
Breweries instead?
Yeah, breweries, if you go to a regular restaurant.
Culture now.
They might be.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely, city regulation.
So that's why, that's why some people are tying it to the tobacco license side?
Yeah, they're, they're kind of mirror imaging it, they're saying, you know, look, we haven't had to deal with THC before, what do we regulate that similar? Booze and tobacco, you can make some comparisons. And it feels a little bit more like tobacco, because presumably you're gonna go in, buy a prepackaged product, and take it off-site, and not consume it on-site. One of the discussions in some communities is, do we want people to be able to consume it on-site and go?
I'm concerned.
The concern there is driving. And so.
We don't, we don't have that problem in Orno.
You're not allowed to sell it in Orno, right?
Right, well, we don't, we don't have cons, well, we don't have cons, we don't have, we don't have a back channel in Orno. Right, well, we don't, we don't have cons, well, we don't have cons, we don't have, we don't have a back channel in Orno.
Right.
So we don't have that problem, but from a THC standpoint, I think it seems like it'd be smart at this point to tie it to tobacco license, so if you do have the enforcement problem, there's something at risk, which is the risk of the tobacco and the THC settling.
What's nice when you tie a tobacco license in only a law if you meet that criteria, is you don't have a coffee shop opening up, and you don't have the hardware store having a display.
Right, by tying it to a tobacco license, right, and that's where, which I thought was smart.
If you like to get mine settled, what form is it in?
Anything.
Anything?
They just go advertise other kids' stuff.
Can be vaping, that was the other thing, a lot of people were unclear, at first there was some guidance from the state that said you couldn't vape, and they've since rescinded that, I mean, this thing was such an evolving aspect, and, and you quickly learn that there's derivatives that aren't THC derivatives, there are other derivatives that are cannabinoids, but they are THC, so you draft an ordinance, you find what is THC, and there's something called HHC that's completely different and still gives you some of the same effects, and so everyone was scrambling. One of the things I would say, and, and, you know, whatever you guys wanna do, is, and I'm, I'm the last person to consult with what the legislature's gonna do, I have a formal track record in this.
So you should tell us. Well, it's all the opposite.
It does seem like something's going to happen, and what I can tell you is that the league kind of puts out their priorities and things they're going to monitor, and this is one, and they do feel like it's going to change, the rules are gonna change. Legislature's heard from a lot of their city representatives that what put us in a tough spot, we ended up being kind of enforcement farm on this thing, weren't ready for it, we didn't give us any guidance, and we didn't see our input, that was tough. So I do think, I do think it's gonna change, I think the question's gonna become is how far do they go? They, they may not stick with the current point three percent of five milligrams, they may really just open it up. And so when we draft an ordinance here in the next month or two, we're gonna have to define what it is we're regulating. That may change.
And will we have the ability to do that?
Yeah, and, yeah, well, and.
If they say you can do anything, and we say, oh, we're gonna limit it to point five, we'll say, sorry, we can't do that.
Yeah, you preempt it, so you may do a lot of definitions, set up a licensing scheme to have the whole network changing six months.
So what's the risk in not, in keeping the status quo and waiting to see what they do?
I don't think there's any risk, there's just an issue of people, people see, businesses see businesses selling it in other communities. At this point in time, Orno said not here.
Not here yet, because the rules aren't defined and we don't know.
So not here yet, do you feel the need to accommodate that, or, you know, make sure that the product is sold here in the near future? I think we will know by March or April whether something's gonna happen, usually as Cory is, isn't effective till August first, but we will get some of the.
We've got plenty of notice ahead of time to do, so it's like, how are we gonna do that versus spending a whole bunch of legal time, which I know you love to do. Bringing in a whole bunch of stuff that could be just thrown in the garbage because we gotta start all over.
Listen, we should hold the status quo right now just because we don't know how it's.
Well, we do have this, until June, right?
I'll get you.
We can tell June right now? So, so we got time.
But, but there's two pieces of this, one is the regulation of the distribution, which is the licensing side, right? But then the other piece is the enforcement side of the people that are consuming it, and so.
That's a whole other issue.
And tell, both of those are clear, you know, I tend to be, you know, wanna maintain our moratorium on it, and because one thing's fine, they're selling it, right, but then as a result, we're having complication that creates more issues for PD, because that's not defined.
And moratorium is kind of just keeps it super clean for them, and we're good till May, and if you say we're gonna know by March or April.
I sure hope so.
We should, I would think so too at this point.
And can we extend if we need, if we need more time, it looks safe, isn't it?
I believe you can, there are, there are rules and regulations of extending that if we're selling, we've enacted this in March, and that would just leave powers and control issues, so I, I think we can get you till August, if you want to do a moratorium through the.
Yeah. And it would give us some time with our, you know, we provide service for other cities too, and so maybe, you know, maybe there's, it'd be clear for everybody.
I don't think we need to extend anything right now, I think we can just keep it as is, just keep what we've got in place, and if we know more and we need to act because of that, we can at, at the moment, but I think we all need to give more information, and I think that's common.
Spring part just passed an ordinance, just because of the pressure, I shouldn't say pressure, back channel, Ruby. But there again, I'm with the owners, operators of that, or either two ordinance, that, like you all were doing, they're doing it the right way. There are other places that are doing it, they're doing it for not on-site, so it's off-site consumption only, so you have to buy the container and take it off-site, they're following all the regulations for how it's packaged, how it's done everything, and Spring Part actually, you know, did this and just said it applies to all of this entity.
The fact is, they're, they're making so much money.
That's right.
They're making a lot of money at this right now, so that's the pressure.
How many businesses are we talking about here in Orno that would be affected?
We don't have. We can sell.
Because you could have some convenience, you know, holidays, some of the convenience stores, they're not, they're, for my quick discussion several months ago, but there are the ones that are very interested because it's retail space, and is it, there were, some of them are worried about the liability because do we want this, because it's all unknown, but we, you know, we have tobacco shop. Several communities around us have tobacco shops specifically, right, that's the ones that are looking at this going, if others, places and communities surrounding us are selling it, what, what's holding us up, and we just wanna get it right.
But from our perspective, we only really have convenience stores, gas stations, Orno station, that kind of stuff.
There is a new smoke shop, a new bar now.
Both are smoke shops. All of that, because they were having signs going up, and you guys had to go chase down.
That would be, that would be the one that, you know, if this impacts where we, you know, we want a licensing component to that license, if we go back.
I think it would make sense to tie it to something, so we have some enforcement.
Well, if you, if you didn't do your moratorium in terms of who would do it, I don't know, but if you rely on just what the statute said, there was no restrictions on it to sell, it, it, it could be the restaurant, it could be, you know.
Hardware store.
There wasn't, there wasn't no backing.
So if it wasn't.
You could sell to someone who was twenty-one, possession, so.
So Victoria can buy it and give it to the kids waiting outside.
Yeah, thanks for that.
It was very important, which is why a lot of communities went to the.
And then on one of these, there was the language that said that it had to be derived from local, locally, the local one? Was it with local?
So when they find it, well, well, that, that started to become the thing, is that once you step in this water, like, are we just selling it? Or is it just the licensing for the sale, and we wanna control where it comes from, because some of the communities were looking at it saying, we're not, we wanna make sure that what goes out on the street or, you know, is sold, it has some quality control, and there weren't the same assurances that we're, that some communities were getting that made them comfortable with both being sold.
So it's just amazing we're talking about quality of drugs being sold, you know?
Oh, I mean, that's.
That's great.
Because you know how you raise them, and what chemicals you put on it, and all.
I'm just glad addiction is an addiction, I mean, it just could be a real problem.
So a good enough direction for, for now?
Yeah, and hopefully we, I just, when we prepared this work session, we didn't know what was gonna be introduced, and so that's where you're sort of.
Well, I guess as you, as you guys kind of hear more, just kind of keep us all informed.
We, we have a good template that if we need to address something in the last, in that March, people, because we get direction of, so it's happened, we have a good template that you're familiar with, so we can come back, and it's a little bit easier than introducing it.
That's fair. I like it being tied and all that stuff, and other people who have done stuff already, so.
Well, it's helpful to know it's coming, so you can keep eyes on, for the process.
All right, well, let's get the tables ready and chairs back in order, I'm sorry, we have that thing else, so.
Move this one out.
And then, um, we'll put the tables behind it.
We'll have it in front?
Yeah, so. Yeah, we'll put the table like, right here. Slide those chairs. Your shoes on, Kevin?
Do I put mine on the outside or put it on the inside?
You put it on the inside.
So. We are able to make a focus just on that law, and it's part of the, the, part of the overall. I mean, I'm sorry. So. Hard because those people, it's kind of, for that, or, I would say, I would recommend that overall storm, or, plan of overall zone. So I'm hoping to look a little bit more.
I'm sure it's simply approved for change before it's announced, so there's some. There's an argument about all of them.
Yeah. Is that all?
They didn't, the developments with this might be.
Yeah, and the, I think. So maybe there's a movement that needs to be amended for the, that put in there some required inspections, also the de-ification for this one more, so that's where it's all coming back to requiring the. So we'll look into it a little bit more and see if we can do a, maybe like a layer of some kind of maintenance degree.
Maintenance don't matter, well, I don't know how states back to that.
But, yeah, this movement, this change requires additional inspections, which is what I'm coming out.
Again, all now that one.
Right, 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 we'll, we'll look into it a little bit more, I won't let you know.
I'm here for something else.
Yeah, I care.
Good, how you doing? What's going on?
Which one, which one are you talking about?
Cherry Avenue, that's the cherry one.
John and Peter both up town when skiing, and say, here you are. And then John insulting, and he said, hey, she goes, wait, you can't, you gotta go. So, yeah, thanks.
I think that's pretty, pretty embarrassing that I didn't see that.
Get yourself a sandwich? I definitely have fridge. Yeah, I, I figured I would grab it after. I made chili for the kids when I was a teenager, like, so. Okay. Yeah, I made them. You have those big slices of stuff.
No.
And you have one side with like.
Do you throw us an email or calls on?
I wasn't really attention.
You'll make, you'll make sure we.
So I try, I think I, I think I got it up.
It's your truck, it will say, it will say, it will have your name on it. And then somewhere it will say.
Okay, but never you live out that moment, you know, but that's okay.
Sorry?
It's okay, you know, I, I've done, I've done my last things, I've had, I've used my processes, and I've had my vendors too. I've taken notes, and he's put me in my place, so it's funny.
See, who's not important? Look at that, look at that, nobody else gets their table or their name, like.
Yeah, me and Josh, Josh, super important. It could say whatever.
She was saying it's not important.
Oh, you know.
Well, there was this, Karen, David here? So when you, you have to remember to use my first name, now I'm gonna use your first name. David. David.
Oh, no.
Led building. What's your building name? Oh, is your dad David? The what? So you're not. You're not with. Yeah, Josh. This is.
My big head's not in the way, is it?
Oh, I need.
Yes. Wherever it is. The answer.
How much? Don't you get the pass? What looks new? I.
I just got these out.
Um, no.
It has to be on everything. Cause my mom. My daddy.
Chief, how are you? All right, chief.
Wow.
Hopefully this is making something. Turned into the next.
Something for that car.
I had a thought.
Do you have that? I've been looking at that. I mean, I question. Looking back, I wish I could.
So do you have to wear that? Someone else do we have? To get more. All powers. I don't know like.
Five years and fifteen hundred. A lot of time.
A little. Is there a guy in the kitchen? Give your bag. Here. Pliers. Five years, people kind of salt. What we kind of. What does that make? Are they guns or what?
Jurassic. I remember you were at the nation. You have no idea what that is. You have. You're a school. You're a guy. You get shot. So you're wearing colors. To the office. You want to come back here? Well, you've been. I do. Very good to see you, Doug. If I could ever go around. To get starting. The industry. I thought it was mine. Funny guy.
I'm. That. We begin with. Quick.
Still over. Is it? Different.
All right, welcome to the new year here. First meeting of two thousand and twenty-three here Monday, January ninth. Know that all council members are here in present. Now, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. So I invite you to stand up and face the flag.
A pledge of allegiance. We provide. We have a nation safe and secure. And we choose our public for which stands. My nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that. And the oath of office for two new council members for the next four years. Matt Johnson and Lisa Benson. And I will throw it to our city administrator and members for introduction. Uh, to those guests, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our oath of office ceremony. Today, we will administer the oath of office to our recently elected city council members. Council member Matt Johnson and council member Lisa Benson. Today's ceremony will take place in two parts. First, each council member will verbally take the oath. And then we'll sign their oath with the city clerk Anna Carlson before they're done. Uh, a little history. Uh, the oath is an important ceremonial gesture signifying the official's start to a term in public office. The oath is a public pledge that the official understands the requirements of the position and will work to the best of their abilities to fulfill those duties. Oaths, oaths have been staples of representative government. Oaths of fealty have been around since recorded history. And oaths of office date back to at least the time of ancient Rome. Oaths have been a requirement for public office from the nation's inception. A unique aspect of oaths in the United States is that they are not made to a monarch or leader, but are to the founding documents and ultimately the people that are governed. The Constitution sets out the presidential oath in full and expressly provides that Congress shall be bound by oath or affirmation to support the Constitution. As a state. Uh, as state and local governments formed, they adopted oaths modeled after the federal oath. And taking of an oath has become a requisite for holding nearly every public office in our state. In recognition of the significance and responsibility bestowed on those who serve our community, Minnesota Statute three fifty-eight point zero five requires that all local government officials upon entering office take the oath as defined in the Minnesota Constitution, Article five, Section six. We will now administer the oaths. Uh, first up, uh, we have council member Matt Johnson. Would you please come forward? Uh, council member Johnson is beginning his second term as an oral council member. Mayor Walsh will administer his oath of office. Uh, could I just center on the podium in front of the flag, please? All right, raise your right hand. I. Say your name.
I, Matt Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of city council member.
The duties of the office of city council member.
Of the city of Orno.
City of Orno.
In the county of Hannibal.
County of Hannibal.
The state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations. All right, I'm going to be the sign. And I'm over here. Okay, thank you. Next, we'll council member Lisa Benson, uh, please come to the front. Council member Benson is beginning her first term as an Orno council member. Uh, the city clerk, uh, will administer the oath of office.
Raise your right hand. I say your name. I, Lisa Benson. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota. And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota. And that I will faithfully discharge duties of the office of Orno council, city council member. One. That I will. Will faithfully discharge duties and that I will faithfully discharge duties of the office of city council member. Of the office of city council member. Of the city of Orno. Of the city of Orno. In the county of Hannibal. In the county of Hannibal. The state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota. To the best of my judgment and ability. To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations to both of you. The next item on our agenda is actually the approval of the agenda. And on that, on the approval, we will approve all the items that are on the consent agenda at that time. And I'll go through those items. So if there's anything anybody wants to pull off and hear more about as a question, we'll do that as well. So with that said, uh, we'd like to see the state of the consent agenda tonight.
I'll take care of it this evening. I'd like to approve items number two through sixteen and we'll be removing item number seventeen.
For a future date.
Future.
Any other thoughts?
I'd like to remove item number four.
Number four. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to request item number fifteen. I'll be removed from the consent agenda, please.
Okay. Okay, so what we've got on the consent agenda tonight is number two, the city council meeting minutes of December twelfth. We have three claims and bills. Uh, number four is, uh, we're taking off to, and we'll talk about that after the three, two presentations that we have. Uh, number five is approval to accept donation that from the Helmsley Charitable Trust, Resolution number seventy-three thirty. Then number six is the approval to accept donation from William and Anastasia Heft, Resolution number seventy-three thirty-one. Number seven is authorization to hire Hunter Buchanan, part-time CSO cadet. Number eight is authorization to hire Melissa Clovis, police officer. Number nine is to approval to dispose of firearm. Number ten is approval of twenty twenty-two sewer rehabilitation project closeout, twenty-two dash fourteen. Number eleven is engineering and design support approval for twenty twenty-three sanitary sewer improvements project, twenty-three dash fourteen. Uh, number twelve, now is that twelve and seventeen going together to come off?
No, I'll guess seventeen.
Uh, number twelve is Shoreline Estates LA twenty-one dash fifty-five, Acceptance Public Improvements, Resolution number seventy-three twenty-nine. Uh, number thirteen is approval to purchase tire replacement equipment. Number fourteen is approval to purchase parks equipment. And number fifteen, we pulled off and then we'll talk about that also after the two presentations. Number sixteen is the water main replacement project, twenty-two dash twenty-three change order number one. And number seventeen, we have removed, uh, to come back at a later date. Any other changes? You seem none of emotion with a couple of the changes. Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold it. Now that passes by.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just gonna say the, uh, nice work on the parks on the, the approval. That number fourteen, we decided to go with the Josh's in here, I don't think, but. You know, went with used equipment on there because it was a significant savings and does the job. So, uh, nice work on that.
Absolutely, do me noted. All right, we have two presentations tonight. One is the approval to accept the donation from the Crime Prevention Fund, Resolution seventy-three thirty-two, and we also got seventy-two thirty-three, so we can probably do them both at the same time.
Yes. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. I want to take this opportunity because we have a great partnership with the Crime Prevention Fund, and tonight they were graciously, we had accepted two donations, one for Jimmy Quintero through the Crime Prevention Fund, and another for reimbursement back for some cameras that were purchased. So I would just want to take this opportunity to let people know who the Crime Prevention Fund is and what they do for our community. So with that being said, I'd like to invite the two members.
Mayor, Members of the Council, thank you very much for having us here. My name is Craig Anderson, I'm the Secretary Treasurer of the Crime Prevention Fund, and we are here tonight to not only provide the donation for the police department, but hopefully tell you a little bit about ourselves. We've been around since nineteen eighty-seven. We served the southwest Hennepin County area, specifically the Orno and Minotristo Police Departments, and with West Hennepin Public Safety as well. We have a fundraiser once a year, so if you play golf, we'd like to invite you all to sign up when our next tournament is, which will hopefully be in June. But we do, we do scholarships for the Orno High School and the West Otto High School. We pay for the DARE program that the Police Department here runs in Wano. And we do a lot of other things. There's been, I think, an electric bike assist that we purchased, and some speed cameras, or not cameras, but speed, whether solar, speed trap, or not traps, but awareness. Yeah, anyway, so it helps the neighborhoods understand really what's going on in the neighborhood with their speed. Oftentimes, they think it's everybody else, you bring it down into the community, into the neighborhood, and all of a sudden, they discover that, you know, it's their neighbors that are part of the problem too, so. And that's what we like to do, is get everybody working together to solve things as best as we can. So, but we do a lot of other programs that have a pamphlet. Okay, and the chief has passed out a pamphlet. And anyways, and then this is Mr. Steve Anderson, one of our board members.
How you doing, welcome. Yeah, one of our other main purposes is we like to focus on things that are maybe difficult for you guys to get funding for, or that are easier for us to kind of pass through, whether it's whatever side items that the community or law enforcement may be able to need if it's getting into the school systems, or things that maybe you just don't have the budget for. And we like to try to connect the community with the police departments, ensure our appreciation for what they do and how they serve. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you for all the work you do. Appreciate it. All right, do we have a motion for both of those?
I will make a motion to approve the donation from the Crime Prevention Fund for Resolution number seven-three-three-two and number seven-three-three-three.
Oh, yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hope that passes five zero. Thank you again for all the things that you guys do, and you guys are local, I'm assuming, right here as well. Hey, right in St. Bonnie, so good local. Thank you again. All right, we will move to, I know Councilmember Benson, I want to number four pulled off, two thousand and twenty-two interfund transfers of loan payments, so I will send it for Councilmembers for your question. I'm sure Brian will have the answer for you.
Thank you, thanks. And this is something that I just want to learn a little bit more about, and so I think there's a slide, Adam, that you were gonna pull for this? Right, oh, it's very small. Yep, thanks. The question I have is about the funding, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand for the general fund to the park fund, and I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about that and help me understand how that transfer is happening, given that it looks like it was part of that two thousand and twenty-one bonding, which in my understanding was for, how it works? So I'm just wondering if you can speak to that and help me understand how this process, you know, comes about or what that is exactly?
Sure, I can, I can answer that. The, in the, part of the two thousand and twenty-one bonding bill that the City of Minnesota passed included some funding for improvements down on Big Island. When it was receiveded by the city, it was receiveded into the general fund. So this is really just sort of a housekeeping move to say, oh, the general fund it needs to go to the park fund where the money was spent out of.
And that was for money that was spent in Big Island, and what year was this?
When was that project going on, Adam? When did you finish it?
Throughout twenty and twenty-one.
Twenty and twenty-one, okay. And what exactly did that entail, just to?
So the, the big island, that Big Island project provided ADA accessible trails on the island, to toilet, toilet facilities, a picnic shelter, and some interpretive signage.
Okay.
There's some mount benches and stuff like that.
I see, okay.
And, and just in case there's some confusion, it says, two thousand and twenty-one bonding, that was state bonding.
Gotcha.
So we, we were allocated a certain amount of money in the state, from the state, that came to us to pay for that project.
That clarifies it, thank you. Thanks, Ron.
All right, well, the motion for number four?
I will make a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-two interfund loan and transfers.
Is there a motion, second?
I'll second them.
Councilmember Benson, number second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hope that passes five zero. Okay, that'll bring us to number fifteen. Lady in the audience will allow us to take off. Approval of fire ladder truck rehab and equipment.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Brandingham, I live at thirty-one eighty-five, County Road six, and I was at the Long Lake Fire Department meeting that was held before the holidays. A number of citizens in Orno asked that our council provide us an opportunity to meet and have information about this, and I would like to know what the council, council's response is to that request. I would also request, like to add my voice to theirs. I, I'm a little, I'm a little puzzled, I guess. We don't have approval from Long Lake that I know of that they're gonna go with your proposal, but here we are with fire truck, and I don't quite understand how it feels like to me a little bit, like we may have gotten out in front of our skis. I'm wanting to know just more all about this whole fire situation, and I don't feel like I've gotten enough information. Thank you.
Thank you.
So in relation to the fire truck, so both Matt and I are on the negotiation committee, and you're a hundred percent right, there's no agreement that we're letting things figured out between the two cities. What I would offer to, through the cities that are served through Long Lake Fire, they have no backup engine. So if any engine goes down, we're gonna be lagging service for our residents. This actually will serve as not only as backup, but actually will serve for some of our bigger buildings that an engine can't get to. So it'll have dual purpose of just a straight-out engine and a straight-out ladder. Upon talking to Adam, we still have flexibility for, you know, us to do that partnership with over them. I know that on this picture, so you see Orno Fire Department, it's a decal, it doesn't mean it's happening tomorrow, but one of the greatest things we have to do for our residents is make sure we provide fire service. And a lot of the equipment that is servicing this area is, is really old. We have told Long Lake that, you know, we would be willing to put this on loan to them until we figure things out, so while, I could see where it would be the perception that this is putting the cart before the horse, but this is very much making sure that your firefighters have the tools that they need to get to your house when there's a fire, so. There's, I mean, there's still ongoing talks, I know Matt and I met him with the committee last month. There's supposed to be a massive response at their next council meeting, but that's really in their control, so. You know, Matt, if you have anything else to add?
Well, the, the other piece of, what's in front of us right here is the conversations about the rehabbing of that equipment. And so, the other piece that happened at a, at a future fire services meeting, which is a meeting that the neighboring communities attend, there was a proposal that was coming from the city of Wayzata, and part of the services that are provided is called mutual aid. Mutual aid means we have a big fire, then our neighboring communities assist with that fire. And we do the same thing on the police, on the police side of things too. And so what they wanted, because they being Wayzata, and also Maple Plain, has a ladder truck, and when the city of Orno has a fire that requires a ladder truck, mutual aid comes, and we don't pay for mutual aid. It's a requirement that we provide it for each other. And what they wanted is for us, us being Long Lake Fire, to, to pay seven hundred thousand dollars for ten years to contribute toward their new ladder, ladder trucks that they wanted to buy. That spurred a conversation. We found out that there was a used one available. What is in front of us on this application is a really great piece of government work here. Went out, we found a piece of equipment for three hundred and fifty thousand, is being refurbished for under two hundred thousand, and this is a vehicle that we own. So we'll get ten plus years of services, we refurbished, the staff took the additional steps of outsourcing different components of this refurbishing to really get our price down as far as we could. And so this is just a really good example of, one, a piece of equipment that we need, two, allows us to provide a better level of service to our community, because now this truck is inside of our city walls instead of requiring that to come from abutting cities. And it's the fiscal responsible thing to do. And keeping in mind, we have been paying somewhere plus or minus of eighty-five percent of the cost of all purchases for Long Lake Fire. So if Long Lake Fire, if we still had a relationship that would bind equipment, we would be paying eighty-five percent of this irregardless. So this piece of equipment, we understood that we need. I really think we did a terrific job as a community, creating a solution to a problem that saves a taxpayer's money.
Again.
Thank you for the answer, and it's helpful to have clarity, and I would just again ask that the council pay attention to the requests that were made at the Long Lake meeting for a meeting for our city to be informed about what is going on with this Long Lake, Orno whole fire department situation. We just need information.
Yeah, next to that time is gonna be most appropriate when we know what Long Lake is gonna do. So we are waiting on their response to ours, and at that point, there's, there's a conversation that needs to be had because right now, we're in limbo. But what we can do to you, is you're a Orno resident, right? Is, is we have to make sure you have fire service.
I understand, and I appreciate the clarity. I'm just asking, one, would the council commit to holding an informational type meeting, something like what was down in Long Lake for citizens of Orno, when the time comes, so that we understand what's at stake here and what this whole possible transfer is gonna cost residents, et cetera? Thank you.
I have a couple more questions about this one. Where is this truck currently being?
It's here in Public Works. Just next door. Public Works, Public Works building.
And this dollar amount, how much was it? This dollar amount for rehabbing is for all of the items?
Seventy thousand dollars for refurbishing directly from the manufacturer of the equipment. It's, there's multiple vendors that are providing equipment for the vehicle for a hundred and fifteen thousand, and there's graphics for another sixty-six hundred.
Just one, one clarification, that seventy thousand is both vendors and some, some in-house stuff that we can do with our own mechanic.
And in reading the packet, I noticed that there were different gradations of rehabbing, it was green, yellow.
Yep, so the fire chief was, was, I think you can see it somewhere, but was just sharing a document, we went through a drill, when the, the fire truck was first purchased, we had McQueen do an assessment of the vehicle, and they provided us kind of a very comprehensive list of all the things that could be done to rehabilitate it. We then went through that list at a staff level and looked at those items that were required, needed to be done before the vehicle would go into service. The kind of the next category, the color coding, was those that, yeah, we think we should do as long as we have the funding to do it. And then there was a third category of those things that, some of them were like aesthetic painting. We did not need to necessarily spend, I think the quote was seventy thousand dollars to change the fire truck from one shade of red to a different shade of red. We felt that was not necessary, so we said, we won't do that. So that's, that's kind of the drill we went through. The other part of the drill we went through was, we had gotten that quote from one, one provider, and there are some of those items that were on that list that we already have as a city, maintenance relationships with different companies, for instance, tires, where we can use our existing vendor to provide the tire replacement at a lesser price.
And tires went from nine thousand to a hundred and four thousand dollars, as an example.
Something, yeah, something like that.
Is it possible to pull up that document, Adam?
The, the color coded one or the?
The one that shows the dollar amounts for each of those categories? Because I, did you, without it in front of me here, I can't recall what the total dollar amount was for the rehabbing?
This one?
Yes. So does that one hundred and ninety-two thousand include just the first two categories and not the third, the estimates?
Correct, we, we chose not.
Okay.
In, in the proposal that we were provided by McQueen, which is what we use as a working document and a review for reference, there are items on there in color coded, red or really, or pink, we said, we're not, we're not doing those, at least not this one.
Covers the graphics though, which is part of your aesthetic, but not repainting.
And so, so the first line there is seven hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-eight, that is for the refurbishment items, that's the changing of tires.
Seven, seven.
You just said, oh, sorry, yes, seven, yes.
That might be wrong.
Those are, those are all of those maintenance type of items. The second number, equipment, with a hundred and fifteen thousand, that is for all the stuff that you need on an engine that doesn't come with the.
Ozes?
That's ozes, toolsets, extraction equipment, radios, I don't know, chief, there's other things I'm missing, main, main items I'm missing, but all that stuff that makes an engine new what an engine needs to do. And then the graphics is just that, that's the graphics, that, you know, what the truck is from and, you know, what the, the number of the truck is and the shield and all that kind of stuff.
So is the intention that after these repairs are done, that this truck becomes functional, becomes part of the fleet, and it's used right away, this ladder truck? That's what I'm trying to understand.
That would be the, that would be the ultimate goal, who would either grant with the city of Long Lake, or if I like, we'll just.
Okay, so otherwise, the repairs would happen, and then it would be still parked across the street at Public Works for the time being? I just want to clarify.
Yep, so there's a couple things. One is, yes, so the first thing is we have to, we have to refurbish it with those mechanical items, as well as the majority of the equipment, before we can even offer the vehicle for training. Because once it's equipped and fully functional, obviously the firefighters need to train on that. The unofficial discussions with the city, with Long Lake is that once it's at that point, they will entertain the idea of using it. I believe, my understanding is that the firefighters in the department would, would like to have access to this vehicle as soon as we can get it to them.
Yeah, as long as it's fully operational, they'll try to, absolutely.
And the other challenge that I mentioned is, if, if, let's say we were like, yes, let's buy a new one, first is one point eight million, and that's crazy, and then plus, oh, sorry, higher, two.
Two, two million.
Two, sorry. And then also, lead times are three years?
Yeah, it's three, it's about thirty-six months for a ladder truck.
Yeah, so that was, you know, even when talking to, on the future, for future services, future fire services meeting, they were talking about that, even just generally in, in the area, all the departments are at risk, if one engine, because not that you can bring it to chunks in Long Lake and just fix it, right? So, you know, having a back, even as a backup, is a, is a huge value to all the cities, and I think it's good that we're talking about it so that, you know, the cities know that we're open to putting it on loan right away, getting the guys trained. Because this is, this would be a completely different piece of equipment for them, so.
So this is something that's been in the works then for a while?
The, the truck?
Getting the second truck for this fire services, for this area?
Um, the discussions.
Regardless, I'm sorry, Adam, regardless of this negotiation right now in Long Lake, Regardless, I'm sorry, regardless of this negotiation, right now Long Lake, this has been in the works regardless of this issue.
Uh, the idea of having a ladder truck to serve our area as part of the Long Lake Fire Department's been on the capital improvement plan for a number of years. It's moved around on the timeline of that capital improvement plan moving forward in recent years. The other factor is that the existing engines we have in the department right now are nearing their end of useful life. So are on the replacement schedule in the near term. So this, this vehicle becomes one, could very well become one of those, those engines to replace the, the ones that are, that are aging out.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'm just trying to separate or understand this fire truck, you know, this ladder truck issue being tied in with the negotiations with Long Lake? Or being something that we've been working on for some time as partners or as a customer of Long Lake, is what I'm trying to get at? So it sounds, did you speak to that just a little bit more?
Um, so when I was chief of the Long Lake Fire Department, we had a ladder truck on the capital improvement plan. And we moved that around to be able to satisfy contractual obligations of the limited capital funding by the sort of the contract currently. So in pushing that out, in these future fire service meetings, then we find out that both the Wayzata Fire Department, Maple Plain Fire Department, were talking about possible replacements of their apparatus. And that's where Matt's kind of conference about how much they were thinking about charging other cities, surrounding cities, to share this equipment was going to cost. And that led to, okay, is there a way that we can better utilize those funds and actually own a piece of equipment which Matt kind of referenced? We were able to do that, so absolutely. The two engines that are currently, went the Long Lake Fire Department are running, running about 20 years. And a typical engine by kind of national guidelines, you want to keep it for about 20 years and when you're, you're trying to replace it. And those have gone from, the last engine that we bought in '17 was $475,000. And now they're close to $1 million a piece, so.
Yeah, thank you, thanks.
Absolutely.
And I don't argue at all, obviously, it makes perfect sense to me that we would look at rehabbing something versus buying something new. Can you remind me when this truck was purchased?
It was purchased late last fall.
Yeah, why is it late, why is it tough?
No, we started looking at it and we purchased it.
December.
On the same November, December.
And was this an expense that we're not budgeted for in 2022?
No.
Okay.
It was not, I guess that would characterize as an opportunity purchase. It was on the CIP and the opportunity for a lightly used ladder truck came up, so the direction was to purchase it.
Okay, and are these improvements something that we budgeted for this year?
We added, we added those into our fire CIP as we went through that process once we ended up getting the truck.
Okay, thank you, I don't have any other questions, thank, thank you.
Anyone else speak?
Sure. Give them your name and address.
Yeah. Dave Pearson, the Department's, whoever the role. Man, I don't, our councilman.
That's fine, that's casual, it's small town.
I don't question the value of this thing, but I, I do question the process. But when I find, we, we find out that this need, and I, what it's gonna cost to refurbish it, which is what? $150,000 plus something else, so let's say almost $200,000 bucks. We've also, the city's also spent $347,000 on the, on the truck itself. My question is, is to spend $500,000 on this, even though it's a good deal, the process seems odd to me. Because nobody in the community knows what's going on. You decided to buy this truck for $500,000, right or wrong? But we as a community have no idea as to what, why it has to be done, which you just answered somewhat. And then, and then what the cost is gonna be and what the alternatives are. And so it just seems to me that, that there ought to be a way to include us, the owners, as to what you're doing. My question, that's, so that's one question. The other question is, we're refurbishing this thing. Is it, is it allowed in the contract with Long Lake? As you haven't talked, you've let Long Lake know, but not can this fire station, can this engine go into this fire station? It won't, I doubt it will fit, but it will fit.
No, it won't fit, it will fit.
You know, then you have, can, being that you're buying it yourself and you've also now let Long Lake know that you're getting, you're getting out of this deal in '25, is there a potential that this new machine can't be used until the end of '25?
Well, you have to realize that we purchased 100% of other equipment, right? So this is not unprecedented in our existing relationship with Long Lake Fire. So either that the command vehicles, or we have two, we have an engine and a, that's, you know, another complete that we own 100% that we, you know, contributed to Long Lake Fire that they use now. So the idea behind us having 100% ownership in some of the equipment, this is, you know, this isn't a foreign concept in our longstanding relationship. So I, there is, we own 100% of fire station number two.
Right.
Right, and so we.
50% of.
Yeah, 50% of fire station number one. So I don't see any reason why all of a sudden we wouldn't be using this equipment to service our residents when it's ready to go, people are trained and everything like that. So no, I don't think that's a risk. To answer your specific question was, is there a chance we're not gonna use this by 2025? I don't see a path to not using it.
Well, I'm talking about legal, I mean, in other words, if you and Long Lake can't come to an agreement, for whatever reason, how does that affect the use of the machinery that we now have plus any new machine? I mean, could that, let's say you and Long Lake don't match, could they then say, this fire truck can't be used or won't be used or whatever until the contract is up? Whether they do that or not, I just, you know, to spend $500,000 bucks or whatever it is without any real information about what's going on? Did you do a request for proposal on this? Is there any other bids for this, or was this a one-time get? Or is there, or in Long Lake's history, or in Long Lake and Orno, I mean, there's a certain amount you can do as a council without having to go for an RFP? So did you do the RFP and, and did you, and, and did you get other bids? Or is this, as you said, is it just a one bid deal?
Well, we weren't, we weren't getting bids, we bought it from another fire station that was selling it. So it's not like we're going to get bids for various.
No, because you get your, okay, but no, we're getting bids for the refurbishing.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
You did, you did get proposals.
But yeah, and then just because this is your first point, I want to address this. You might be learning about the, the cost for rehab for the first time tonight. But it's been discussed at the council, the cost of rehabbing it. And, and actually the initial estimates for the rehab, I believe were actually higher than we ended up. So this is not the first time, it might be the first time for you, but it isn't the first time this council has had public conversation about and documentation about this equipment and the fact that it needs rehabbing. So this isn't the first time.
If, if somebody went out to this survey, to the people of Orno, and said, well, why do you know about what's going on with the fire station? Would you feel comfortable you went in and surveyed?
Say, I'm sorry, what was the question?
If you went out to this survey, for the people, the people who are not bringing this up because I've had many people, what is going on? Which is, so if, if you went out for the survey, because you, apparently you're not gonna do it on all meetings. I mean, that seems to be, I mean, because I requested that November 17th, and I heard nothing back. But if the survey was done and, and, and it came back, people of Orno don't have really much of an idea.
What's the question on the survey, what, what's the question here?
The question is, are you aware of the conversations with Long Lake and Orno as to, Orno, the mayor, your aide, your son, fire department, do you kind of know that?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know that answer. I think you're bringing up a really good question. I'm glad you're here, you're, you're being engaged, you're trying to learn. That's the residents' responsibility to come forward, learn, find the information. We're here, we're putting this information out in a very public way. We record, I'm not done. We, we, we record these meetings, we publish them live. And, and information is available. And I'm really encouraged by the fact that you're here, you're a resident, you want to know more, you're learning more, you're asking questions. That's, that's what we hope to see.
But with, why, okay, well, this, now we're getting back to the town hall meeting. This is so important to, to both Long Lake and Orno. That why isn't the presentation you make, the mayor makes, or whatever, as to why we're doing this? What's the cost, what's the cost to the taxpayer? And what are the alternatives to spending this kind of money? Are you seeing it, because you've talked about it, does that mean that it, it should be done? I mean, I mean, we're, we're a big, we're a big, I'm not, I mean, we're in a big community. And why don't we have the right to know how our money is being spent?
You have the right all the time to understand that. But we've also been talking about this, if you know, for three years. We've had many dialogues at this council, many dialogues even just about that fire truck between all the different engines and the cars and the reasons that we're doing this. We've been go, we've been having that conversations like this, well, we're the most transparent council you've ever seen, everything's on video. All the documents are online, we've had these conversations consistently.
Okay, and so that brings up a question. Are you ready to go into a synergy? When was this, when was the published chance to come in and review this right now?
August, September, October, November, pick a month.
Well, it's not going to send a gender right now.
Right, the, just, just for the refurbishing, yes.
Well, what I'm saying is, the opportunity to, to come, okay, so if you're saying, so what you're saying is basically the public's not engaged. Part of your responsibility is to get them engaged. Now, and we're on a big comment with that is, you've got, you've got a public town hall meeting, I think tomorrow, on the public hall of work and the actuary meetings. They're having a town hall informational meeting. Why can't the council put together a similar meeting so that people can understand how their money is being spent? Maybe, you know, they're busy arguing, your responsibility is, is to reach out to the, to the citizens.
Well, you know, when, when we actually have something to talk about, that would probably be a good idea. But we're, we've been waiting for Long Lake to make decisions on a number of things for years. And we can't get decisions out of them. So maybe you need to go to Long Lake too and say, what are you gonna do, what decisions are you making?
I, I already know. And, but my, but my concern is, is Orno doing that? I mean, it's.
Yeah, that time, that time is, I mean, there's.
The time is coming.
I mean, the time is coming, we're, but what, we, we don't have anything for you right now until, until Long Lake makes a decision. Right now, they've told us, as recently as last week, I think it was, that at their next council meeting, they hope to have a consensus on a counter or a reply to our offer that we gave them in.
October.
October. Okay, so when they do that, but then we'll have something to talk about with where the future of the existing department's going. Because that's the first question that needs to be answered. Where's this, in the meantime?
Right.
We have to move ahead as though Long Lake is gonna go off and do, have their own relationship. And those are the steps that we're taking here to make sure that we have adequate service for our city regardless of what Long Lake decides to do. We hope they're our partner. We, we've been very clear that we hope going forward that we have a relationship with them, that we keep the firefighters together. And, and I'm still very optimistic that Long Lake is gonna come back to us realizing that very same thing. But it's in their court.
Exactly, right, and, and I, and I agree with it. But the fact is, you're spending money now on this equipment, it's a $200,000, $600,000. If you got the fire chief, you know, that you've now hired at $120,000 a year, what, for three years? So he isn't gonna be the fire chief technically for three years, but we're gonna pay him. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I just think we as a community have a right to at, at least have the council present to them what is actually going on and that's all.
Here's, here's the one thing you might want to recognize. If this truck stayed on the CIP down the road, Orno's end of it would be about $1.8 million. So instead of spending $1.8, we're getting a very good value on a used piece of equipment that we're able to refurbish that has really been in need. I would say going back easy 15 years, we should have had ladder truck in this community? 15 years?
Yeah.
And I spent 10 years on that department. So they should have had this years ago. This truck was a super value without waiting for the build. That was really important. Because as, as Matt stated, we have to proceed and go ahead to get things ready.
Totally understand.
Regardless of what they do. And the biggest part of it is, we are the budget. This isn't something that's costing us much more money. Orno is the budget of Long Lake Fire. We are the budget. That's where the money is. It's primarily from the citizens of Orno. So as stewards of that money, we're responsible. And to make sure things get settled properly, spent fiscally responsible. And this truck was a super value, it was a great deal, so. But we need to figure out.
I don't argue the value, and then I'll leave. I don't argue the value of this truck and, and, and just the community either. I'm, I'm arguing with the process. That's what I'm, of, having been on the council myself, that the process of letting the community know what they're doing, letting them become involved into the city.
Well, we, we have, we have been talking about this again since August.
And why don't people know about?
Did you know about the last cloud truck we bought for $300,000?
Well.
Do you care?
I probably, if I, if I knew about it. But I might, I might say something about it, but I, you know, or you just, to me, you need to let the community.
Okay, well, I appreciate your, I appreciate.
So that's, that's my, my comment and, and do, do what you need.
Thank you.
Nancy Brandingham from 3185 Calumens 6. With respect, Councilwoman Johnson, I appreciate at some level what you were saying about you'd like to have all the details sewn up. But frankly, when Long Lake presented at their meeting prior to the holidays, they presented that they didn't have all the answers yet, but they asked for citizen input and they shared what they were wrestling with. And I think, to be honest, how this whole fire department merger stuff is floating around out in the community, you've just gotta come out to your citizens and say, here's what we're wrestling with. And that's gonna take a little extra effort so you can have credibility as a council. And I do appreciate your explanations, very, that was helpful. But I don't necessarily feel that I'd like to spend every other Monday night just in case I might learn something at council. I'd like you to reach out a little bit.
That's why.
When you already have, when you already have information that the community is in an uproar a bit about this thing, please just reach out and do this council presentation with where you're at. You don't have to have, you don't have to have everything finalized.
So I, I commit to you, I mean, so one of the things that Matt and I are working on, the benefit of James being here, is for him to do the basis of a need assessment.
Thank you.
Right, so that's what, that's what he's working on. So, and so until he's done that, right, but that's his priority, so is he working? Yes, he's working, he's gonna be very, very busy. Saying, figuring out like, what do we need to have the most efficient, best service to? What does that look like? And really just starting from scratch and looking under all the rocks, all the things. That will be brought back to you, but that's not something you do overnight, it's, it takes time.
I understand, but right now, what came out in Long Lake at the meeting is, oh, all of a sudden Orno has a fire chief. All of a sudden, from this to us, new information, you see what I'm trying to get at?
I was at the meeting, I, I, I heard, you know, I heard what they said. You know, but clearly Long Lake is trying to get public support for their cause about what they want, right? And they're trying to get residents of Orno to question what, you know, their council is doing. That came through clear, I was there. is doing, that came through clear, I was there. And the time is coming where there's gonna be a lot more information to share, it's just, is, we're just short of that.
You can.
And just to, just to, you know, put an exclamation point on what Victoria said, we, we've already met this year, made it our priority. James came on the last day of December, we met the first week of January, um, as, as Victoria and I, um, are on this negotiation team with the fire, so we're, you know, neck deep in the fire, and Adam was there, and Ron was there, and we met, and first thing is needs assessment, right? 'Cause this is their department, they had the administrative control, we're just getting a look under the hood for the first time. Even though we've been paying the vast majority of the bill, we're getting our first look. So we're doing an assessment. In the meantime, Long Lake has gotta make a decision, whatever it is. When we put those two things together, there's gonna be a lot of public information to share, and that conversation's gonna happen with the public, people are gonna put on, put on notice, it's gonna be on the agenda, and there's gonna be a lot to talk about, because right now, Victoria and I can talk about it, you know, when we're, we're not on council meetings, we can talk about it, 'cause there's two of us, and then at some point, we have to bring all the information back and share it, not only with the public, but the whole council.
I would just urge you to do more sooner than later.
Okay.
And, uh, I'll be finished with that. And I do thank you once again for clarifying. I also think on the video that people might see of this meeting to hear this conversation will be helpful, and that's how we're gonna get the information out, but, but further efforts are required. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna echo Kim Marisol, two sixty, one second, I feel like every time I come to a meeting, this is on the agenda, so maybe it would be good for all of us to have a separate meeting and where people can just hear the whole story, like what started it, what problem we're trying to solve, what options are, and where we are, because this always comes up, and I think the bits and pieces are hard to put together for people that just aren't that connected, like you or Victoria or Matt. So I'd encourage some sort of public meeting, like I'm seeing about the pickleball courts or the golf course enhancement, that we put that kind of focus on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, we have a motion.
Now, I'm going to make a motion for the approval of the fire, fire ladder truck recap and equipping.
I'll second it.
Hold on, please, we're standing.
Aye.
Follow us.
I'm gonna abstain from that.
Now, what's your reason for abstaining?
I don't feel like I have enough information on this, and I know fire service is a big issue, and I just simply don't feel that I have a good enough handle on this issue to be able to.
Okay, well, see, I mean, I have a financial interest, so I need, you need to, actually, hold on one way.
So, if you, yeah, I mean, if you are understanding to the financial conflict, then that would be more reasonable, if you just don't want to vote, you, you can abstain, it, it, it ends up counting as a no vote.
Okay, a financial conflict, can you explain that?
Sure. So, for example, if somebody buying a fire truck from you or from someone in their family, which I know they're not, but that's an example, that would be a financial conflict, then the extension would not be advisable, but, uh, and so at that point, the absentee vote is basically a four zero, which is your extension, or the council. Abstaining or just, yeah, I don't wanna vote on it, um, is allowable, but just so you know that wouldn't count the votes, uh, and then, uh, basically counting as a no vote. So with a full council of five, takes three votes to pass something on here, unless there's a conflict or financial, otherwise, if it's just a, an extension, it's kind of an extension, but it works.
Okay, then I could change it to a no, um, that would work for me as well.
Okay, and now that passes formally.
And again, I'd like to state I'm not very supportive of fire, but to me, um, this is just an issue that I feel I need more information on to be able to support it financially.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the number twenty, the Community Development Report, LA twenty-two dash fifty-five, Scucci Design, on behalf of Travis and Sarah Woldenbergh, thirty, thirty Cherry Avenue, Cherry Avenue, Variances, I'll say your name.
Okay.
The, um, new owner is not the, of thirty-eight thirty Cherry Avenue, are requesting Variances to conduct a major home renovation, including footprint additions and a second story. Um, the existing home is situated twenty feet from the, um, high water level of the lake, almost entirely within the seventy-five foot setback. Most of the home is also within the average length or setback. The deck of the home is cantilevered seven feet over the lake. This project requires seventy-five foot lake setback, average length or setback, and hardcover variances. Initially, the, um, applicant's plan included two small footprint expansions, and the seventy-five foot setback, um, shown, kinda hard to tell whether, one is... One is right here, it's a chimney, and the other was, um, a living space addition on the east, on the west side of the home, a lake or the average length or setback. Um, the original plan also included a second story, which was proposed to extend, um, all the way to the foundation of the lake or side of the home. There were some additional hardcover improvements proposed as well. Staff recommended denial of this plan at Planning Commission. At their November meeting, the Planning Commission held the public hearing. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission voted three to one on a motion to deny the request of Variances. Following the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant revised plans to remove the footprint expansions within the seventy-five foot setback, and then also pulled the second story addition back twelve feet from the lake to minimize the impact from the massing on the lake. The footprint addition over existing hardcover on the street side of the home was enlarged to make up for the adjustment to the second story on the lake side. Additionally, the applicant is proposing a reduction of fifty-one square feet of hardcover from the previously proposed plan, resulting in thirty-two point six percent proposed hardcover, uh, which is a reflect, reduction of two hundred and seventy-five feet from the existing condition. Um, we have not received public comment on this application. Um, staff finds that the revised plans, um, are more reasonable than the initial proposal, and as a result, um, staff has changed the recommendation to approval according to the revised plans. Um, tonight, we'll give the council to direct staff to draft a resolution for adoption at your next meeting. I can answer questions, um, the applicant is here, um, that's all I have.
Any questions for staff?
Not yet.
We, I just, okay, so, would you go back, Melanie, did that side by side, we'd find, and then, um, so, ahead of the seventy-five foot, the yellow in the middle, I read it with like repurposed?
Yes.
It's persist, proposed covered porch, right? Uh, on the reviser.
Oh, here.
Yeah, right there. Okay, so it said repurposed on one of them, and then, but it's, is it currently covered now, or this is completely, was it a stoop now?
I mean, it's.
It's covered?
I think they're proposing it as a covered stoop, it's, I think it's an open stoop. I think the applicant can probably speak to that better. Um, there is a proposed addition on the east side of that stoop.
Yeah, that's like a stair.
Yeah, for the, yep.
Okay.
Oh, is that what the addition is for, is for the stair, then?
I, I believe so, to, to, to the staircase.
She doesn't wanna come, uh.
You can stick your name for the record, too.
Well, I'm Sarah Woldenbergh, this is my husband Travis. We currently live at fourteen twenty-one North Arm Drive, which is about a quarter of a mile from thirty-eight thirty Cherry. Have a little bit of like, kind of a journey of getting this property, you know, we moved to our current address back in twenty fifteen, and started taking walks down Cherry Avenue, and noticed this property sitting vacant for over five years, uh, and we've been looking at lake properties for a long time, and hadn't found any that could've checked all our boxes, and ultimately in twenty twenty, I sent a letter to the owner of the address to see if she's interested in selling it. Um, and we love the big front yard with your small kids, so we love that big yard space and north arm bays, um, we fell in the wood as far as all the outdoor stuff we like to do, uh, and, and so I sent this letter, and, uh, she called about a week later, the current, the previous owner, said she was interested in selling. It was a very, um, long journey to get into closing, uh, but ultimately closed back in July, this past year, uh, and that's when I started looking at different builders and architects to try to figure out what could we do with this to make it more family friendly. Right now, as it lays out the architecture, the design of the house, we really love that modern design, and really wanted to keep, the bones of the house are really good, but it's not laid out for a family at all, um, more like a, good for a single person living there, or apartments more so. Uh, and so we sort of worked with Peter Stryker, for our architect, and John Daly with revisions, to look at a lot of different design options to figure out how we can make this a functional home for our family. Um, and, you know, presented at that Planning Commission meeting back in November, got a lot of good feedback, that, um, Spenn, Gus Smith is here with, um, Stone, who's stepping in for John Daly tonight, 'cause he's out of town, uh, to talk more about those specifics, but, um, yeah, that, the main question about is that stairs, new addition it is, and that would be to get to the, the kids' rooms, which are gonna be on that upper level extended with the garage.
Okay, how stoop does, is it, it's not, they're hardcover stoops, it's about stoop.
Yeah, okay, so it's hardcover right now.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, that was just my only clarification on the, on the plan, I couldn't figure out.
So what you did, so first, from the beginning one, is you took out the addition that was, uh, inside the zero seventy-five and the average length or setback.
Correct.
But everything else is the same.
Got it.
I suppose you had those little walkway steps, I guess.
Yeah, there, sorry. Smith, you guys just have a little revision, uh, revision three lakes to the east. Uh, there were a couple other minor, uh, changes that I think Melanie pointed out pretty well, maybe you have a slide on that, um, that Peter might have sent, but there was, uh, two, I guess I'm not seeing, right, one there, there we go. Uh, so there were a few other, uh, removals, lake side, uh, the planter wall, uh, to the, uh, to the bottom of the page there was removed, um, and the small patio off to the, uh, right there, exactly, were also removed. The second story was also pushed back twelve feet, um, which does change the impact from the lake quite a bit, makes the home feel quite a bit smaller just because of the angle that we viewed.
All right, thanks, I don't have any questions. Okay, okay, thank you. So, I may make, I guess, one more, so you got your existing dwelling, that's just kinda right behind the deck that goes over the water, and is that, that's, you're not changing or doing anything with that? Interior, just interior, not a lane, okay? Okay, that's all, questions ahead, anybody else? No?
What's the changes of hardcover between the two? Is that how?
They, they, they're reducing hardcover from thirty-three point nine percent to thirty-two point six, so it's two hundred and seventy-five square feet less.
And what was the rate, what was that original name?
The square footage?
The cover.
Thirty-three point nine.
Oh, so from the original, not the original.
They had, they had the cover, right?
Yeah, that's it, existing conditions.
Yep.
Any advice?
No, I think, uh, to make you feel better, I think this is a really good example, the Planning Commission giving some really good advice to help you make some, uh, adjustments, 'cause the, the original plan, I certainly wouldn't have supported, um, so, but, uh, given the fact that, you know, this is a tremendous hardship, given the fact that the entire, most of the living portion of the house is ahead of the average length or setback, I think these improvements, um, are consistent, we're not keeping up any more hardcover, so, um, I'm comfortable with, uh, with the revised plan, that really... Can I make a motion?
Can we make a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve LA twenty-two dash fifty-five.
As approved with the revised site plan.
Right, the revised. The one we have is the, yes, the revised, the, yeah, what, what we're asking for is a motion to draft staff.
Draft a resolution.
To draft a residential, yeah.
Go ahead. Second?
Second.
Hold on, please, we're standing.
Aye.
Polls? I want that to pass as five zero. Okay, that'll bring us to, uh, Mayor Ron, finance report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we have, uh, the final slide for two thousand twenty-two, uh, building permit revenue. Um, you can see it up to the far right, I mean, far exceeded last year's, uh, building permit revenue or building related revenue. Um, the dark line there is the budget, which, total budget, which was five hundred and sixty-five thousand, total, total revenues, and the final, uh, payment at seven hundred thirteen, seven thirty-seven. So, I have, that's, that's pretty much the slide we have. I've been looking at overall revenues for the general, and, um, we're still waiting our final little bit of accounting jack settlement, and, uh, so that's pretty close now, so.
Ninety-nine, ninety-eight, hundred and three?
Probably ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent. So we had those hundred and three, so. We, we have, even though, did you, uh, what, you tell us, we haven't seen, uh, but, but we did. There's technical reasons for that.
Right. Well, those are great slides like that, we'll have to open every, every meeting.
Okay.
Okay, that's it for that?
That's it for now.
Uh, I'll go back to the community development, is there any report from the community development report?
Um, just busy still wrapping up some end of year stuff with our interview reporting. Um, we finished the year with fifty-four great new houses this year, and, um, just over fourteen hundred total permits, so we were a busy department, and then we're working on, we're, excuse me, our planning commission, which is happening next week, so we're working on that package right now.
And you had a busy December with, uh, some stuff coming in for, and, too, which you're saying is true.
Yes.
A busy December, which will make a busy planning commission.
Yes, I believe we'll make a busy, busy next few months, a planning commission.
That's all positive, that's for sure. All right, so, I'm the city attorney before.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't have any updates for tonight, I do, uh, plan, working with Adam, I believe we're gonna do an update at your next meeting in the closed session, so I don't have anything for today.
And city administrator engineer before.
Um, just a couple, uh, odds and ends, uh, one, just, uh, the, uh, to note, the, uh, Public Works Department and the Parks Department have been very busy over the last week and a half, uh, with our snow and ice removal, um, so we're even out still today, uh, trying to move, move snow around so we can make, uh, make room for the, for the next batch that comes our way, so.
And DJ, thank you, thank you, everybody going, for Public Works, thank you for all the hard work.
You're welcome.
So I'm on to the sidewalks today in Navire, it's a lot of snow, that's for sure.
Makes it brave, don't mean it's DJ. Yeah, and I, this may be a good time, uh, DJ to jump in on that, is, uh, in, in Public Works, I, I've received two different resident calls randomly, uh, over the last two weeks here, thanking the city of Orono for, uh, taking on the, uh, plowing of the Dakota Rail Trail. And so, for people that don't know, that's a Three Rivers Park responsibility, they're refusing to do it to keep the clear snow, we, uh, lobbied them to do that multiple times, so the city of Orono took that on, and we did have the pilot program in first year, uh, the Three Rivers, uh, reimbursed us five hundred dollars, I believe, for the year, uh, to do that, but it's a really great public service that, uh, Public Works does, and they get on it, Parks, or Parks, let's move to Parks this year. Forget, well, uh, the, the city of Orono, uh, has done it, and it's a, it's a really nice service, people don't realize it, uh, but they're doing a great job, so I wanted to pass it along.
Um, the other thing, just, uh, as a public announcement, we do have, uh, as mentioned earlier, we have an open house tomorrow, uh, same location right here, uh, for, uh, the golf course park enhancement, uh, potential projects, and then on Wednesday evening, uh, we have another open house here, uh, in City Hall for the Fox Street, um, project, uh, road project for this year for those residents, so, um, that's what we have on the, uh, on the near term calendar. That's all, yeah.
All right, we're gonna take a five minute break, uh, not too much water here, so we'll be back in five minutes. in five minutes.
area or something like that.
Can I reiterate here on the public comments, there are limited three minutes per person. It's an opportunity for the public to address the city council. The city council will not engage in discussion or take action at items presented at this time. However, the council may refer issues to staff or follow or consideration at a future meeting. Speakers should state their name and home address at the podium before speaking. And Adam has the clock.
Ryan Erickson, twenty-four eighty-five, Independence Row. It's unfortunate Mr. Crosby felt compelled to run out again tonight. I really want to speak to him, but we'll just pretend he's here. Before we get started, I need to clear up a few things, set the record straight. Here witness for my grandparents. They were born and walled in nineteen oh eight and nineteen oh nine. They were married in nineteen thirty-nine. Why are you rolling your eyes, Mr. Walsh?
I roll my eyes.
They were married in nineteen thirty-nine at the age of thirty and twenty-nine respectively. In less than a year, the Nazis invaded and subjected them to things that are unspeakable. So when you send me videos invoking the deaths, the extermination of six million Jews, you have opened a door that you will not close. Moving on to Mr. Crosby. This is for the city, okay? There's a few things I need to clear up after his diatribe, what is it, a month ago now, about me? Called me a clown. He said I'm bestraying him and degradating him, I believe he said. Those are not words, but I have been derading him. What does it say right here? Donate to the, to their GoFundMe on the Proud Boys thing, right? You want to roll your eyes some more? This is for the city. He's standing, and he's standing right here with this picture. And he's crowdfunding for the Proud Boys. One in particular, Mr. Corey Nielsen. Guess what? He's now a Hell's Angel. Are you guys still friends with him? That's right here. This is for the city, okay? And he calls me a clown. Look at here. We got a new gate in time, front and center at the Capitol steps here. Look at it. Who's the clown? Look at this picture, Mr. Walsh, your little stumpie friend in the beanie, the red pointy head. What's this shit? What's he wearing on his knee here and his haptic here? He hasn't been a firefighter in four years, but he's down there fighting DLM and Antifa. Give me a break. This is a stop the steal rally. This isn't a mask mandate rally.
Or different kinds of, that's your three minutes of action.
Then he goes to crowdfunding, then he goes up to DC. What gives? When are you going to deal with this? Using this office. It's a crowdfunding for Proud Boys. That's from Mr. Edwards. Everybody see this? Looks like a clown right there. That's a clown. Capitol steps Crosby right there. That's what you guys are paying for. Make sure you vote for him next time. He's out there fighting for the people of the state and the country, not you guys. DLM and Antifa, big shot. Bring scissors to a gunfight.
Be on the wrong.
Yeah, hit that thing harder.
Anybody else have any comments?
Come on, somebody, for Christ sakes.
Jane Galaney, thirteen fifteen, with, uh, here to talk about the multi-sport facility project proposed at the owner of Public Golf, which includes pickleball and hockey. It's a great sadness that we're here for a second time in a year to talk about the development of historic land in Orno. The project targets city land dedicated to golf since nineteen twenty-four. Orno Public Golf has the oldest golf league in Minnesota, formed in nineteen forty-eight, and it's still a golf league today. And the first course to have grass greens in the state. It is beloved for its rural and natural character and challenging greens. The course is located in the middle of a quiet residential neighborhood. There's been no direct engagement strategies employed by the city or any marketing attempts to elicit feedback from the neighborhood golf community or citizens other than the two scheduled open houses announced on January third. Only informal meetings were offered record were offered. The project will decrease city's open spaces and increase hardcover car traffic, light and noise levels. Noise levels will go from seasonal golf and pedestrian sports to year-round noise levels of high-impact sports. Pickleball has been the subject of lawsuits against city governments and housing associations across the country. Because it is a fast-growing sport, courts have been built without that put consideration for community impact. It is becoming increasingly known that pickleball construction is a project with seriously, serious community impacts when built in the wrong location. Already there is not enough parking at the golf course on week nights or busy days. Currently, within six miles to the west, twelve miles to the east, and ten miles to north and south of Orno, there are currently eighty-five plus public pickleball courts. This is a sport that is already well-supported in the community and surrounding areas with many courts in the works. In two thousand and nineteen, the Orno Activity Center was built and has opened pickleball for the community. Cities around the metro area are retrofitting tennis courts and looking into options that are more cost-effective and make better use of infrastructure that already exists. And the hockey subject, Castle Point is three miles away and has a stadium used by youth hockey. A need for youth hockey ice time cannot drive citywide spending. The proposal is built on the assumption that residents of Orno need and want increased recreational infrastructure.
Got you at the end. We'll be tip-top playing tomorrow, I'm sure.
How, can I ask you, how is that format going to be tomorrow? No one can answer that.
It's going to be an open format like our normal accounts. No, 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 nobody will be up here. We'll all be down there chatting, talking.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So anybody else for a public comment tonight? I guess you know, more public comment, have a close public comment, bring it to the mayor council report. Council member Benson.
Thank you. This being my first council report, I thought I'd just write a little something and share it with all of you. We'll only take but a few minutes. Just want to start by saying that it is an incredible honor to sit before you tonight as a member of the Orno City Council. And the privilege of serving our community as an elected official is one that comes with great responsibility and one that inspires both humility and a deep sense of gratitude in me. I was elected to serve as a representative of the people of Orno, and many people took action to help make my bid for a seat successful. It's important to acknowledge that this position requires continuous support and guidance of many people across a multitude of disciplines in order to perform well. And on this note, I want to take a moment to acknowledge that Orno City's staff, who have been welcoming and generous with their assistance from the moment I was a council member-elect. Last month, I attended a day-long orientation in service and spent time with every department head to better understand their roles and their responsibilities. And during a break, we shared lunch where the only agenda item was to enjoy conversation entirely unrelated to city business, which was great. It's important to me that amidst the business of running a city, that personal connection not be overlooked. Supporting our staff is a priority of mine and as the work can be challenging, especially when complex contentious issues arise. And thanks to each of the following people for sharing your expertise and making yourselves available to me, some of whom are here tonight. Adam Edwards, city administrator and engineer, thank you. Ron Olson, the finance director, thanks to you. Corey Farnham, chief of police, thank you. DJ Goan, public works superintendent, thanks to you. Laura Oaken, the community development director, thank you. And Josh Lemmons, the parks and golf course superintendent. Anna Carlson, her city clerk. I also want to acknowledge Chief James Van Isle, whom I hope to meet with in the near future. I look forward to understanding more about fire services in the coming weeks. And as we all likely agree, it's one of the most essential services provided to our community and one that deserves thoughtful consideration. The concept of best practices is one that will guide my actions as a member of the city council. One of my promises to the residents of Orno was that I would take opportunities to continually learn and grow within this role. So next month, I will attend the League of Cities elected official training. And I'm looking forward not only to learning more about finance, ethics, and the laws that inform city governance, but also to connecting with other elected officials around the metro. In addition to growing my knowledge, I'll look forward in the coming months to growing relationships both inside and outside the city of Orno. Relationships are at the heart of every city, including this one. Without trust and transparency, regular challenges become even more difficult. It's not possible to agree on everything. However, what I will do is to commit to listening, learning, and to treat with great care the trust that has been placed in me by this community. Thanks to everyone in attendance here tonight and to those watching locally or at distance over the live stream, as well as to every community, community member in Orno and our neighboring cities. The residents of Orno are the ones I will look to again and again as I navigate decisions down the road. Thank you. That's all.
Well, I did not have a big speech prepared, but nice and welcome to the council and glad to see you give kudos to our staff because they definitely are the guiding post and a great group of human beings to lean on. So I mean, we kind of got into a little bit what my update was going to be, that, you know, we've met with James to kind of get that work done on the needs assessment for fire. As I was mentioning, that's really going to be the cornerstone of the conversations going forward. So we can get a bigger, a fuller picture of what's happening and what could potentially happen out to the public. So outside of that, just again, big thanks to DJ and the team. We had a lot of snow and I would say the roads were better in the city than they were in the county. So much appreciated. So that's all I got.
Tori, we attended that future fire meeting last week. That, that meeting is surrounding communities and talking about future fire services. They contemplated hiring another consultant to get some additional information. There didn't seem to be a lot of support to do that. There is some consolidation that's occurring in some of our neighboring fire departments. There is some consolidation that's occurring in some of our neighboring fire departments. And so with respect to the progress being made at the future fire services meeting, you know, I, my recommendation is we don't spend any more, send any more staff to the meetings. The last, uh, last three, I mean, we're just, there isn't any real progress occurring that I think, Adam, that we, you know, need to devote staff time to. That could change, but for right now, it's just, uh, general conversations that the, uh, that you can get off the agenda. So we can obviously, you're still on the email queue. So I don't, I don't know what the formality of making that decision looks like, but, um, I, I just don't see a good use of time. And I'm not recommending that Chief Van Isle attend either at this point for that. But we, you know, one of us can go as a representative of the city of Orno, but probably doesn't best use the staff now unless you have an objection.
I guess I would just like to keep that door open. It's, uh, it's another leads for us to engage with our neighboring staffs on, not the fire, but other issues. So, um, I, I would appreciate it not being an ad for a meeting forum or other staff, but I would like to keep the door open.
That's a perfect solution really too, yeah. And then we'll kind of work with having, uh, one or two members on fire negotiation there. So, so, uh, other than that, um, yeah, thank you for, uh, we have been re-elected for another forty years here. So it's, I've learned a tremendous amount over this amount of time. And, um, congratulations to you. You're going to learn a lot along the way here. Can't learn until you start doing it. So, uh, it's a, it's, I'm happy to do it. And I, and, you know, there's a lot of questions from the community here about transparency. I've heard that come up. I'm just, I, I really think this city and staff and this council does a good job of putting things out there. And I'm, I'm encouraged by the people wanting to get more involved and start paying attention. I don't personally believe it's the government's job to knock on your door and say, "We'll pay attention." But we certainly want you to come, ask your questions and, uh, learn and add the transparency there and read back. That's the residents' responsibility. So, but thanks again for, uh, re-electing me and that's all I have.
Yes, congratulations, uh, Johnson and Benson. Welcome. Hope everybody had a great New Years. I know I have a little bit of chaos going on. My experience in traveling, that's for sure. Commend our, our police and our public works for all the great job they did through all the snow and the Long Bay Fire Department. For me, they've done their first responders and taken care of people. And that's never goes, never go unsaid, that's for sure. To expand on Matt's point, I hear a lot about the transparency issue. And, you know, if you go back to the history of this council, which goes back, you know, six to eight years, um, you know, before this council, before I was on, we didn't have videotaping. This is the, this is the council that brought videotaping to the Parks Commission, brought videotaping to the Planning Commission. We have everything documented. Everything is online. All the documents were the most transparent council this city has ever had. We've also brought budgeting for roads and sewer and water infrastructure, which weren't budgeted before. And, uh, you know, because Ron had raised eyebrows a number of times when he explained to me what was going on and we put that to rest. So we're completely budgeted. We brought technology into the city over the last eight years. Didn't know there's a lot of residents here and all realize all the history of what it used to be like. And you used to come beat that and everything was paper. You wanted permit, you had to fill a paperwork. It would go in front of four or five different people, one person at a time. And who knows how long it would take. Sometimes it was taking two to three to four weeks. We put the website online. We got permitting online. All the file cabinets that they used to have at the city that had all the paperwork that everybody had to thumb through are gone. They've all been scanned. You can click on properties now, which I know Matt, when we were, uh, originally on code review, when we were trying to talk about what are the good codes, what are the bad codes from these old codes that are outdated that we get rid of or update. And if a good code is a pit hole, you know, bringing in technology for the whole permitting process. And you, you know, originally you said as a Realtor, you say, "I want to build a little property." Click on something, know everything that's happened on that property. And that's been the goal for everybody to come do business in Orno, to keep it as simple as possible, not put the thumb on the resident, um, period. We also did that for Public Works where we bought 3D technology that they can use now to show us all the roads that we've had in Orno, all the sewer, all the water systems where they are. It's got information on every project we've done on those roads, how much it costs when we did it. So we can really dial into what needs to get done. So you can budget and plan which we've done. But without the, without having the technology to do that, it's kind of hard to budget and plan, trying to find old paperwork from thirty years ago of what's under the roads. Now it's all on 3D technology. The whole code review committee, we've done, I don't know how many codes that we reviewed and updated. And we brought in a network of builders and people who have had going permits and Realtors to say what works, what doesn't, what's working in other cities that we should be doing better. And over the course of probably three years, we just revamped the entire process. And it takes time. And this council was done there over the last sixty-eight years. We also went through a comp plan a few years ago. And the old comp plan, uh, used to say that Orno would never look at vacating land, giving land, doing anything. It was just, the answer was, "No, we can't do it." And this council said that we will look at every opportunity for issues in Orno. Vacated on, uh, old alleys, roads, uh, things that are going through people's yards that are visible that shouldn't be there, that are creating code problems. And we said, "We'll look at everyone, lose on a case-by-case basis." And we've done that. We've got hundred-year-old alleys. I think the, the one that nobody's brought up, that I just had looked up, that I think I had to have Matt look up for me again, in Forest Lake again, was over at, uh, kind of a near neighborhood, is right over at eleven twenty-one North Arm Drive. Well, that's one of the properties that, in the middle of the lake, there's roads and alleys and stuff that's been platted from a hundred thirty years ago. The, the plat of land that was in the lake went up into the actual first few feet of that person's house. So they almost didn't realize they didn't own their lake shore, even though they're right there. So the old, the old comp plan would say, "I'm sorry, you're out of luck. We can't do anything about that." Well, we said, "We will solve that problem for you." And I tell you, we've got three other people that I was up with the other day that have the same problem, I believe. I think you've got eleven oh one North Arm Drive, Martin Sirembo. He's got some issues on his land with alleys and old roads that are in the lake that are on his property. Nine sixty Forest Arms Lane, Douglas Nealon. Ten sixty-five Linden Lane, Anthony A. and Gary Cusnick. You got one at eleven thirty one Elwood, CJ Wild. These people have the same properties that if you go and look at the GIS maps on Annapolis County, you can see all these old alleys and roads that are on their property from the lake, which means potentially they don't own part of the property that they think they own. In the past, nobody would take care of that. But because we changed the comp plan, that everybody likes to say, "God, you're giving away land." We're not giving away land, we're solving problems. Things that got done a long time ago that don't make any more sense. And I challenge anybody to show me anything that we've done that has not made any sense. So we've done all those things. So I commend this council. We're going to keep doing the things up here. We've got two open houses coming like Adam mentioned. And, uh, we ran on originally, or when we first ran, people used to say, "This is Orno." You come to the city and it's, "No, we're just not going to do this for you." And our job was to bring yes back to Orno. That we will get things solved, we'll take care of issues that are out there. We'll simplify the process for you. We'll bring down the cost of it for you. And all that's done is worked and worked really well. And we will continue to bring yes to Orno as much as we can. So anyways, thank you. Happy New Year and we look forward to seeing anybody who's coming tomorrow or the next council meeting.